We ask God that you would be with those families and touch them. And God, as we come into the Thanksgiving season, Lord, we just ask that each and every one of us would remember to be thankful for the small things in life. And help us to portray that and to be more thankful in our everyday lives. We ask God that you would give us your mind, that you would help us as we conduct business for the city today. We ask God that your will be done in everything that is carried out and done today. And it's in your precious name we ask, amen.
Brian, I'd like to add to that if you would. Heavenly Father, we want to thank you today for the care that you've given to Andy Parker over the last few days, the guiding of the doctor's hands, the people that have seen it. We ask that you would continue those blessings. We know that he's having difficulty swallowing in particular and is definitely uncomfortable. We ask that you just put your arms around him and help him to recover as soon as possible. Andy loves his job, he loves to work. I can see him being very fidgety in the situation that he's in. So, Lord, we just asked your favors and blessings on him and his family. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, like to welcome everybody and echo what the mayor said. We do miss Andy in his absence, but we do have Teresa today. And she's already told me that we gotta go slow. So, we're gonna go slow today. Make sure that she gets everything down that we need to do, okay? Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Hey, we got a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, we don't have any old business on the agenda. Our new business is to set the schedule for the upcoming holiday season. Do you know what our typical, when the holiday's been on?
Well, according to federal policy, it's two days for Thanksgiving. So, this would be Thursday.
But it's our Friday.
Yeah, those are set. I think it's Christmas and New Year.
Yeah, Christmas and New Years.
They're both on Monday this year, is that right? And the decision that we're looking at is whether we wanna give Friday or Tuesday or just let the one day be the holiday.
Right, Christmas and New Year's both are on Monday.
What does that holiday cost us?
Do we give Monday and Fri- do we give Friday and Monday or do we give Monday and Tuesday? What about the employees? Do y'all have a preference?
From a trash collection standpoint, it'd be better to do that Friday and Monday.
Friday and Monday?
Well, my experience is that all my help always went with saying that it's better for them if they can be off extra before rather than after Christmas.
A lot of people be getting together for Christmas, even on Friday and going out of town.
I don't have a problem doing Friday and Monday.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Is that each week?
Do what?
Is that for New Years too?
Yes. Do you have a problem with that?
Just clarification.
I mean, if you do, you can work. I mean, Randy'll have guys there.
Can you give me a budget calculation? I'm gonna add initially two X over holidays.
Christmas and New Year's.
Well, I just added two X for total because that was just what had happened in New Year's holidays. So, I was like, exactly.
Up early. So, did you make the motion?
I did.
Okay, I'll second.
Let me ask Greg something before you vote on it. Normally, you would have a workforce that's Saturday. So, you're gonna take Friday, Saturday, and Monday.
We will take Sunday and Monday and fill in with part-time people. We can shut the rest of it down right now.
So, you're gonna have folks working that day?
The full-time people that will be getting the extra benefits, most of those will be at home.
Okay. You don't have a problem?
No.
Okay.
Will make it work. We appreciate it very much.
So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Number two on the agenda is to authorize the payroll department to process checks for one-time pay adjustments based on last year's recommendations. This is a one-time end of the year pay adjustment.
This will be done.
And this was the same thing?
That's what we said the day we wanted it to be done.
Thanksgiving week, would you say I'd do that week?
Thanksgiving week.
I think so. Probably everybody go shopping on Black Friday.
When did, uh, when did we do it last year?
Thanksgiving week.
Okay.
Years ago, it used to be the first of December, and then we backed it up, or y'all backed it up, a couple, three years ago to the week of Thanksgiving so that people could go shopping with it on the sale Friday.
But it's traditionally included employees that were hired through DC repair. That's what we were discussing, as far as they cut off the date for who gets the available amount, who gets a lower amount.
I'd make a motion to go with the schedule as presented and do it that week.
Do we have a motion on the floor? Do we have a second? We have a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I guess motion carried.
Do we establish an amount?
It's on that schedule.
Oh, okay. I wasn't paying attention.
And so, that's gonna include everybody's considered full-time that's hired through DC repair.
Okay. Next on the agenda, it's good to have James Payton with us, gonna give updates about the Terrapin Hill sewer project.
Okay. The, I guess also the SRL. I'll cover that first, this is quicker, I guess. The bids were open last Thursday for the upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant. There were four bids received. The low bid was being credit construction from Florence in the amount of $665,000. We, we worked with them in the past, we can recommend their work. And a recommendation to the council is that you award it to them contingent upon approval by A.D.M. And we still got some paperwork that's gotta go through, just a formality, but we've gotta go through that. And there's still, there's about $300,000 still left in that because the bids came in a little early expected. So, we'd be able to come back to the council in the next few months or weeks with some other ways you could spend that money. But if the council is agreeable now to pass the resolution to award it contingent upon, then we'll be ready in the next few weeks when everything comes in. We'll go and have the credit construction company get that done.
That $1.1 million project, okay. I'd make a motion with it.
I'll second.
Intention of one.
Intention of.
Contingent, yeah.
Probable by A.D.M.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Okay, I guess the next item was the sewer. We have, at late preliminary, we can lay a gravity sewer line that would start at Dead Man's Curve pump station and generally follow Big Will's Creek. And this would eliminate the pump station that's at 49th Street across from the old Earthrise building. It would also eliminate the pump station that's at the, where the Terrapin Hills is going, if the city were to take that sewer into the city, this line would also serve it by gravity. So, it would, this project would eliminate a pump station that I keep on it and would give you service to the Terrapin Hills area. And then this would all flow to the pump stations that are at Dead Man's Curve, which is being underutilized. So...
This doesn't include anything up Highway 11 going into Portobello, any of that area, right?
No, sir. The initial proposal I put together just got to kind of the edge of Terrapin Hills. And we separately looked at that, that can be added only go, we can still pull by gravity on that valley.
I wonder if that's something we'd wanna consider, do it all in one project, if we're gonna borrow money.
Taking that in consideration, we ask James to give us a preliminary on what that leg would be, and he's got some information. I think just engineering would be...
Right. For another, uh, which, the, the total cost for that work was $6.8 million approximately for that, that's engineering and the destruction and everything. And if we wanted to look at adding some additional, $14,900 will be additional to do the layout and the preliminary engineering, not including the construction. That would probably run another $800,000 to $1 million, something like that, for the construction.
I would suggest...
I would suggest we go ahead and proceed with that, at least the engineering and layout.
What we needed right away is something to help us deal with this lawsuit that's been filed by A.D.M. where they're seeking to get an injunction against the operation of Terrapin Hills. Can you, if you got to the point where the city council said go, what is a timeline to have from Dead Man's Curve to the pump station at 49th Street? A generous timeline. I need a, sort of a worst-case scenario.
To be in service.
Be in service.
Okay. You're probably talking about a construction period of six to eight months. It's a lot of big, the layout field work could probably take a couple of months. So, you're probably talking about realistically 12 to 15 months.
That includes a looking at each park.
Now, would this eliminate the need for the pump station that was bakery?
Which one?
49th.
Yes, that, 49th Street, this would eliminate that.
And it would eliminate the need for the pump station that now existed.
Correct.
It would eliminate the lagoon in total.
Bypass the lagoon.
That wet well would actually go into a sewer manhole and would come into some city services and then we would have the ability to get with the folks in Terrapin Hills, explain to them what our plans are, and let them come under the umbrella of the city sewer department and start billing accordingly.
Is that gonna run a line down 49th Street, or no?
Yes.
It will?
48th Street.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you go out 49th Street, turn down to the old 49th Street that runs the Branks from Sierra Lake, that, we've already got all that prompting all the way up through there. We've got a street right away from there to the pump station. And then we actually have some right-of-way work partners got on out toward the interstate. So, that would be not the big issue there. The only thing that we've gotta look at right now, in short term, if we had agreed to do this project, and it's gonna take 12 to 15 months, we need to be able to do something to get with A.D.M., explain to them what our timeline is. And they would, we would possibly take over the operation of that lagoon in the short term, but we would need some from A.D.M. that Rocky's working on to give us protection, that they would let us do that and let us do it for a few years without...
If you have a plan, place, if you have a plan, place, generally go to A.D.M. and work out a compliance schedule, they call it, and it could be...
I think A.D.M. would be very receptive to us giving them that proposal, and that would potentially eliminate the lawsuits we've just joined into to try to protect the inhabitants of Terrapin Hills.
I mean, we're got to do it at some point.
Yeah.
Well, these engineering plans, he's talking about spending additional, did you say $15,000 on engineering plans, which at some point you're gonna use? So, if you use them this year, if you use them two years, if you use them five years from now, you'd probably save money because I bet his fees are going up in time.
Yeah, I'd go ahead and do it all in one day, as far as...
I know.
That's the beauty of it. We can get a copy of this map to the, to the media if they want it. This project was designed in 2002, James is very familiar with it. So, a lot of the engineering's already been done on some of these phases. The upper phase, the new sewer line, which would put sewer to areas of town where there is none, is only one that hadn't been engineered. So, they would have to engineer that, and then this additional $15,000 would take it all the way to the water plant. And we would have a gravity sewer line on Will's Creek all the way from 67th Street, eventually down to the sale barn if all three projects are done. And that would open up that whole area of town for sewer and additional development. But some of this are being paid for by people before us, and if we're gonna do this, I would think we'd go ahead and do that $15,000 worth of engineering, and that way all of us would be ready to start designing and bidding in the next few months.
I agree.
And we also, if we can work out what we're trying to work out, we would also be able, and there's a, let me just say there's lots of moving parts. We've not only got A.D.M., but we've also got the Terrapin Hills sewer system itself and the jungle title to that thing and the claims against it. But, but one of the things that we would hope to do is actually have a period of time that while we're putting all this together, we begin to collect some revenues out of the Terrapin Hills and other subdivisions. And we call it Terrapin Hills, but it serves several subdivisions.
Actually, more homeowners above Terrapin Hills that are on this system than there are within. But we always call it Terrapin Hills because that's where the collection point is.
Right.
But anyway, that would, that would enable us within, say, a year or two years to offset the additional expenses to the city for, for taking that route out toward Terrapin. So, it really wouldn't be much, if any, of a cost to the, to the other citizens of Fort Point.
Probably about $5,000 to $10,000 here payback. And close to 200 households up there that are gonna be affected by this. If we don't take action, it's gonna be an adverse. If we take action, it's, it's gonna fix a longstanding problem, and we'll open up a tremendous amount of Fort Point for development.
Jared, do you know of any plans to, or do you have any drawings or anything about US 11 there at 222X?
Between the, you know, they did, they did the widening of the road from kind of Western Sislin to interstate.
Right.
And they had another phase.
Now, I'm talking about the 222, the north exit, US 11.
Right. They had another phase that started from there and went up to the new exit. And then the third phase was the exit, well, they put the middle one on hold, so I haven't heard if they revived it or not. But at one time, there was a, uh, plans, very preliminary plans, a four lane, basically where they stopped just past the middle exit up to where they built the exit.
But you know of any, the way I have any drawings or anything about a sewer line up there around the north, the 222X?
Well, this one goes through the 222X. The one he's talking about goes to the 222X.
Do we go like the Dead Man's Curve pump station?
But it would probably run down Airport Road, would it not?
But this, this would stop at the pump station that's there, if you go just past the interstate exits on the right, the pump station.
Yeah, right. But see, on the, on the east side of the interstate, the Chevrolet plate, Donahoe, was down in there. I don't believe there's a sewer in there.
Yeah, the main sewer line for the whole battery runs right behind them, and they just put a tab across the road.
But I'm probably on the other side of that road.
Come up to the old Shell station?
Yeah.
They just ran sewer last year through that hump to get to, because it, I didn't realize that it was on safety tank, and that's one of the reasons it couldn't...
That's one reason it's closed.
Right.
When they widened the road there, there was a casing that was under the road.
They ran it through there?
Well, not in that project, I think since then, sewer has been extended through it.
Then I think Tim and them just hooked up for the new apartment complex.
Yeah, we got them already.
And the apartment's up on Hickson, or they already run the tap for that, and then that'll be ready to run in the next few months, I think, or soon.
Since the gas station, or they didn't ever put the pump in, pretty much everything on that side of the road's now sewered.
Yeah, they put a pump in, but nobody's opened it.
Yeah, good. I knew I was gonna draw a back on that station.
And the other side of the interstate's got sewer in some places, but this would give us the ability to go down to that pump station and do a, that forced main part of that right there.
There's still some places up there, Airport Road, that we would like to have some access if we're going down. And that's my understanding that the pressure line won't accept any...
That's the problem, we can't tie into that pressure main because it's so brittle. If it collapses, that's the whole drain for that end of the valley going down Airport Road. And when it picks up that pump station at the end of the runway, it's gotta go over the hill all the way to the sale barn before it's picked up again. This would eliminate that whole pump station. You would go from it, down the creek, to the creek, and then down to the sale barn in that phase.
Yeah, if you did all the phases on that.
We did all these phases, we would eliminate three pump stations, Rob, is that right? The Airport Road, the 49th Street, and the Dead Man's Curve. Okay, all right. Yeah, that'd take four pump stations out of the mix that cost us several thousand dollars.
But that's not part of this engineering project right now, is it?
Yeah, it, this whole three projects right here would, would be, the total project's about $18 million ballpark. The upper phase here is 6.8. It would eliminate the Sierra Lake Earthrise pump station. It would go to the Dead Man's Curve pump station, which is half again bigger than the 49th Street, is that right?
It's, uh, I think it's a tad bigger.
It's bigger than...
We used to have a...
We wouldn't be going from bigger to, we would be going from smaller to larger, so it would accommodate it. And that pump station, that Dead Man's Curve, is also the one that picks up the line from the Russell plant. It has very little to, to no use on it now, but it could eventually. So, this is, this is all a major development issue for that.
When it comes to funding, are we willing to, to secure funding for all of that at one time?
I think what we looked at with our meeting with Tony Rena the other day was, if we do this sewer project, all three phases, and we tie it into our green space, our waterway cleanup, and a couple of other things, and can put a back path on it, he estimates we could possibly get 50/50 funded on this. We could possibly do this whole project for $900,000 to $100,000.
But if I understand it correctly, the engineering's complete on the part from exit 218 to exit 222.
But we did all the field layout and the preliminary engineering. There had to be some...
So, now what we're, what we're doing is trying to put something together so that we're ready to talk to A.D.M. about Terrapin Hills. But how much of that you're actually gonna fund is a decision, like we were talking about downstairs, that you can evolve and, and make your decision before you issue your bonds. So, I think what you need to do is authorize the engineering for that upper part, and that's...
Other part. We need to authorize the field work, base engineering on the upper project. Is that C? Which one is it? Phase three, that's what we're calling phase three, is the one from Dead Man's Curve to 49th Street and go to A.D.M. So, we would need to authorize the field work preliminary design on it, add this other $15,000 for the spur going up to 67th Street, where all of that would be done. And then once we get that done, that's, that's part of the project is, is done, then we could actually come into the next couple of months, how much we wanna get to do what with.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second. Hey, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, James.
Motion carried. Yes, thank you, James. We really appreciate it.
I'm glad you told us you could get all that done in 30 days downstairs. Ain't that what you said?
I don't know.
Okay, next, next on the agenda is a, upon Tim Williams' recommendations, authorizing an ordinance for stop signs to be installed at the intersection of Meadowbrook Road and Cardinal Lane at Banks Drive. You wanna speak to that, Tim?
Yeah, as it is now, there's only one stop sign there. And there's no, no, no kind of record showing that it was there, so that's why I wouldn't say we put two in. We're actually only gonna install one. But there's a, in times past, there have been there, but they're missing and nobody remembers them. All it'll do is have a two-way stop coming into Banks, because there's no traffic control right now.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second to approve. Also, on the, I know there was some discussion about the Banks Drive being a speeding problem.
This should eliminate that.
Well, it, it wouldn't really, because it, it won't stop the flow on Banks Drive. It's just gonna be the two side streets. We had discussed maybe doing a speed table and that would save the, the speed. So, if y'all were, we really need, would need to wait to do it during paving season, but we could, if y'all wanna go ahead and authorize one, we could go ahead and do it in the spring, we start paving. But that would help a lot because it is very fast.
That was one request I had a few weeks ago, was that long straightaway, it's quite a bit of traffic there and a lot of people with small dogs and kids that like to ride their bicycles and stuff. So, I wouldn't have a problem authorizing the speed table to put in as soon as it's practical for the paving crew, at the discretion of them and the police chief of where it would be best suited.
Yeah, we can get together, maybe pick a location.
I'd make that motion.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I don't think we ever voted on the stop signs.
Got a motion and a second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor on the stop signs, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, guys.
I thought we had done that.
We had already done that, but that's all right.
We didn't vote on it.
But we did now.
We got it voted on now.
Barely voted on.
Okay, number five is discussion on canceling the next council meeting, which is scheduled for the week of Thanksgiving.
So, move.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have, we have a motion made by Red to cancel the council meeting, second by Wade. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried.
Jessica, do we need to address the payments of accounts now since we're not having that second meeting, or what can we do?
We can wrap them at the first meeting.
Okay, all right. Okay, good deal. All right, Mayor, you have a report?
Several of us were supposed to go to a meeting in the morning at nine to discuss a commercial development project. It's been changed to down here instead of the Canyon Center, so I think Lynn and Wade are gonna meet with us. Most everything that I had wrote down has been pretty well covered. We have a question that comes up from time to time about mowing private property, and we, we've done it on a few occasions. There've been some liens placed on some, on some occasions. We had one in particular that we mowed right before boom days. We sent that guy a bill for $500 for mowing it. That ought to get his attention. So, you don't wanna do these sort of things, but sometimes you're kinda forced into it. I don't know whether we've got a, we talked at one time about the possibility of accumulating as they come up, and then maybe two, three times a year, ask for liens to be placed on them. What would you recommend on that, Roger? That's usually handled, Steve usually handles those, but I would think that it, whatever bills you send, that if you done one place more than once, then I'd let it accumulate for 12 months where it's fairly significant, get a lien and file it at the courthouse. That way, if they start selling the property, then they've got to take care of you before they can. If it's a one-time thing, you might as well go ahead and place your lien as soon as you do it. Well, we've got a settlement we're real reluctant to do, but sooner or later, somebody's gonna have to, and it's just a matter of, Jimmy pretty well knows which ones in that situation.
May I say that I got a call from that gentleman this morning regarding that $500 bill I sent him? And he's begging for us to negotiate that down. He had supposedly hired a gentleman to mow it, and he's paid him $150. He's claimed three times this year to keep it mowed. And I told him I would speak with you and the council today to see if you wanted to reduce that down to some smaller amount, but it got his attention for sure. And I, I feel like that we, I know that it's, Tim's got his hands full, but we have a lot of vacant property that is either tax property, nobody owns it except the state now, and but those properties need to be maintained as well because a lot of times they're between two existing homes, and that it makes everything in the neighborhood look bad. And I would like to, even if we don't file, or don't, if we mow them, I think we need to file a lien. I think we need to file a lien for some amount, and maybe accumulation for two or three months, that might be appropriate. I don't have problems... that might be appropriate, I don't have a problem with that, rather than sending a bill each month, or doing a resolution each month to put it on there. But we need to do something with a lot of lots in town, and I think it's going to come down to the city mowing it, and us adding it as a lien to the property or something. It really makes our city look bad when you drive down Alabama, or Forest, or Grand, and you see these lots that are grown up as high as your head in here. And so, I'd like the council to really consider how we're going to address this, and see if we can come to some workable solution.
I did a mount on that, and I put a lot of thought into coming up with that figure, and the reason is, if we charge them only what it costs us, then we're going to be mowing every yard in town, because they'll be able to pay us a lot cheaper than they can pay a landscape guy to pay, coming to mow it. So that's why I charged the price I did, because that's almost double the price of what normal people would have charged to mow it.
And this is the second time that we mowed it.
I believe that's correct.
The first time we ain't charging nothing, he promised that he'd keep it mowed from that point on. So we've actually got two, two charges on it, I stayed with it, I don't know what...
Now, we got two for one, so I'd say leave it alone.
Well, and if we get close to the price that somebody else is going to charge him, he's just not going to deal with it, even calling anybody, he's going to let us take care of it for him.
And talking with him this morning, he also said that we used to mow it all the time, because Mayor Jordan kept talking to him about purchasing this particular piece of property, and then, of course, times got hard for the city, and they didn't, didn't ever follow through with buying the property. But for a long period of time, the city mowed it anyway, and so he's had a real bargain, in my opinion.
How many properties did you come up with on the list that you generated for, that we've actually got an interest in, that we need to put on the market at some point in time? We've accumulated a lot of lots across Fort Wayne the last few years.
Well, a lot under tax properties, but we don't actually own the two or three properties that are, that are already in the city's name.
Yeah, but we're keeping a bunch up.
Wasn't it 40 something?
Yeah.
Like 43 years or something like that.
I think that's correct, about 43, and that was just for the main area of town, I didn't, we didn't go out on the mountain or anywhere else. And also, Wade had asked me to try to find out what the tax liability is to the state on some of these properties. That is a moving target. In other words, if you're ready to purchase some of them, then we need to find out what that amount is, because it changes from what I've been told on a regular basis. They're adding fees and additional tax each day, so...
Some of them got more taxes on them than Wade, more than what they're worth.
Yeah. So I don't know if Rocky could contact the state and see if there's any kind of provision, or cities taking over these tax liability properties or not, but if there is, maybe we could acquire them that way and avoid that state tax.
Yeah, they'll let you pay them back the tax and give you a deed.
But some of the taxes that Wade's saying is more than...
I understand, and their position is always, you can pay the taxes and we'll give you a deed. But I'll ask them again.
Longer we wait, the more it's going to be, so if we can settle some...
Call Nick Jones, he'll pay.
Too much?
Call Nick Jones, he'll pay.
Careful what you bid on, I get it. Don't try and give it away.
You're talking about the owner of the Terrapin Hills.
Yeah, all he's got's the lagoon.
Yeah, he just got the lagoon, he doesn't have the money making part.
The holding area.
You got anything else, Mayor?
I think that's it, other than what we need to discuss in executive session.
Make the most of going to executive session, unless...
We got, we got one more thing.
Hold on one second, I had a request that I'll think out on the agenda, we just didn't get it in time, of what, the Camp County Hart Walk, there's a request, and they do a thing over the being and all the way up to the BFW on the Saturday, the 18th, from 8:00 to 10:00, we don't have a problem with it, so I just didn't make it on the agenda, but y'all, okay, that, let them know.
Motion to approve?
Second. Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. A lot to thank everybody for coming, does anybody in the audience have anything that they would like to address the council with? Not, we appreciate you coming, hope you have a great Thanksgiving season, as we entered into Thanksgiving and Christmas. Appreciate you coming, I think Wade made a motion to go into executive session.
Lynn, second.
Lynn, second.
Aye.
Roll call vote.